Ballot drawing for places on the ballot. And, uh, the city secretary Dana will be in charge of that.
We're just gonna go by. You turn yours in first. No, you're not up for reelection today. Oh, yeah, I didn't want to do that, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to take it around or you write or?
Yeah, I'll let you do that.
Okay, who's next?
Kimmy.
I'll remember.
Oh, Kimmy's number one. Uh, next would be... Oh, Dean Tenille.
Six.
Uh, Dennis Cooper's next.
Four.
Uh, next would be Leslie.
Well, I know that. Well, um, can I?
Number five.
Next is Russell Duckworth.
I have to do now.
No, I'll try. I'm gonna add them together.
Great.
Helen Judkins.
Number seven.
Uh, Monty Feigley.
Number three.
And Jimmy Lappin.
You got on the gas or? Number nine. Can you tell us what we're?
First is Shakimela Aubrey. Two is Disha Redgill. Three is Monty Feigley. Four is Jan Cooper. Five is Leslie Robertson. Six is Dean Tenille. Seven is Helen Judkins. Eight is Russell Duckworth. And nine is Jimmy Lappin.
Okay, the ballot drawing is now over. And we have to drop to seven o'clock to our, uh, first public hearing of the night.
Robert Sun and Camille. Did you say Camille?
Tenille.
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 Dean Tenille. D-I-N-N-E-L-L.
K-E.
T, it's a tongue.
T-E-N.
No. T-I.
I, I'm sorry.
N-N.
Uh-huh.
E.
Uh-huh.
L-L.
And so Aubrey is Kimmy?
Yes.
Okay.
But it'll be she wants to Shakimela.
Okay.
On the ballot.
And then Judkins, Duckworth, and Lappin.
Correct.
You don't do short end?
No. Sure don't.
You got all the name down? Can I take a picture of it, please?
Yeah, if you could read it.
Do you wanna?
So the city council place is no mayor.
There's three open.
Three seats.
Three seats.
Is Pat Connaughton still the our mayor?
Yes. No, next time is the mayor in one position. This time it's three.
Yeah, it's, right now Shakimela, Disha, and Russell are all up for reelection.
Then next time it'll be two and the mayor.
Next year.
Next year.
That's what they ordered by.
The public hearing. Overall. It's probably seen on here.
Was it toughies?
Was he what? Was he my head? I don't know. He wasn't my top friend.
I'm sorry, it wasn't my fault either. Did you make him a head thing? No. I just heard that.
I'm driving about fifty miles down Shirley.
I didn't hear that unless like that. We'll find out.
Well, he honestly looked like a license from a guy that hit the tree. That's right.
Over there, you know where you stop in, uh, on Eastman? And if you turn right, you'll go coming out. Right there, you know, there's that little joint. Right there in that bushy trees.
Oh, that's where the answer was.
I thought he was, I thought he was saying the trailer. Wow, he don't have front wheel, or he has wheel, but that's it. That's all they had on.
That was that one.
That was that one. The truck.
Yeah, pick up, yeah. Get right into the tree, drive through some of those. We had Cynthia Vaughn in here, Cynthia Honegrove, and Benny Kelly. And I was okay, I didn't see how it was, but I was.
I heard that they were out there, but I, they went by me so fast that I couldn't leave. Hard. Like the cities were, I figured they were. That's the point. Yeah, it was on the wheel. I thought that.
But he was still going.
I thought that, uh... His direction never coming, that it was full city.
It wasn't.
Well.
Supposedly.
Now, we ran up on the bridge.
I heard all the traffic cars go by.
Hey, David, are you saying you didn't know what was going on?
He just seemed unbothered, I don't think he knew. He knew what was going on, he just didn't.
Oh, my goodness.
So I saw him all go by.
He told who it was. And then the county came right behind them, so. But anyway, somebody totally knows.
He got to, he got to through here from what I understand. Because he's neutralized the case. So he had to keep up. Now that's what.
Well, and even if it started another jurisdiction.
Well, he got to spin the dice already. Yeah, the two five hundred and eighty. They carried the stretcher out to the truck, but then they had to go back and get the bag. But we left after that because. And it getting dark and things. Right. We just didn't know.
I wondered why all the tra, all the signs were going by my house. I didn't go because they don't need looking, they say, you know. There's a lot of them.
Who's the Roberts? Who's the Roberts?
Leslie.
Oh, Leslie.
Roberts, I don't remember that, so my office called me last week, so.
And Feigley is the one that's got all the signs all over the ballot.
That's me. And they'll be normal.
You're number nine.
Jimmy, Jimmy. Yeah, is that nine?
No, I mean, no, this is just. Well, I'm sorry.
It's just them signing it over.
Greg, what else you don't think we're doing tonight?
Uh, going over permits and fees. And then, uh, other things. If we, if we receive anything from Stephen Street. We see kind of information.
Are you telling whether you're anything to say?
No.
Or, I mean, what was the original?
Original what? I don't want to get on your ass.
I guess the proposal, whatever.
So that's it.
That's about the, um, Cheryl thing.
But I thought, uh, that he wrote something out or something.
I mean, only thing I got from him was the public notice. Which is what we had to do, which is what we have to do to have this. You have to have your, you have to have public hearings to give the citizens a chance to, you know, let you know they oppose or they.
It's right there, what it was about. It's over.
Right.
You put that in the public notice report.
It's a black college.
Oh, you never saw the public notice in the paper?
Because Melinda said that they're beginning to store that monument. Look on the paper. Where the college was.
Okay, it is now seven o'clock. We're gonna start the public hearing for closure of Stevens Street. Russell?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Kimmy?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
And Disha myself. Okay, now, um, do we have any, uh, opposition to or anybody that is for the abandonment? Or vac, uh, vacation?
That's how he worded it. That's how the attorney worded it.
Of Stevens Street, does anybody want to speak on? I mean, I know y'all have already spoken, but this is just one of the hearings.
I wrote everything down and gave you a copy of the way I feel, so you know where I'm coming from. Got anything to say, Bob?
Not much of an objection.
That's our president.
I know.
Well, everyone might not know.
Our next hearing, uh, on this same item will be next Monday night, so.
Seven?
That'll conclude the.
Seven?
Public hearings. Uh, we have.
Yeah. Is that it?
I think I wrote it on the calendar as next Monday.
A couple of them, so.
Yeah.
Eight one was six thirty, one was at seven.
That's it? Are you sleeping?
Disha, may I oppose? I would like to oppose that I don't think they should.
Really?
On Stevens Street.
You don't think we should, they should close it?
No.
For the, um, for the cemetery to type over? Is there a reason or just?
Well, that's our cemetery, and no, it's been there for years and years, I just hate to see it, just.
Now, you do realize the road's not gonna be closed. It's gonna keep up, be kept up by the Cemetery Association. Isn't that the way I understand it, Bobby?
Yes. We'll maintain our own road, that's great.
It just won't be a city street anymore.
It just won't be a thorough street.
Oh, okay, it won't be a thorough.
It won't be a city street as own. It'll be maintained from where that fence is, there on Stevens, all the way around to where the Presbyterian Church is.
Okay, so it will be private.
It'll be, just like any other cemetery. It'll be cemetery, um, zoned and, uh, they will keep up the streets from what I understand.
Okay, I just like, this guy, I just misunderstood.
Right, yeah.
Maybe a lot of people did too, that's the way I understood it.
Do y'all want to comment on that? You Cheryl or Bobby? I am telling them right, Rob.
What, yeah? Well, so the cemetery is, is willing to maintain the circle. Two streets or the usual two streets. Uh, we just don't want it to be a thorough street for people to ride through. Because of the cemetery and the sanctity of that. We want to keep it private, except for anybody who wants to come in, they can be, can come in there anytime.
Instead of seeing loved ones.
Exactly, they can come in there anytime.
So y'all gonna put a gate up or something to block it off, or what are y'all gonna do?
There's a gate on the west side. And that's on to keep people from driving through, but you can come by the Presbyterian Church, or what it used to be. Anytime you want to, they'll always be left open. So if you want to go down there and see somebody or visit cemetery, you'll always have access to it.
And we have a lot of people that are finding their roots that come here too, so.
Yeah, we're not in any way trying to restrict anybody from going down there. Just from making it a thoroughfare. That's our only concern. So anybody will always be.
Playing, drinking, and drugs too. But we have signs of, so.
And I probably did that the wrong way, I have a feeling I did. But you know how I talk, I meant the opposite.
She's me, eh, she?
She's not against it.
I'm not against that.
She's not against it.
I just understood that it was gonna be a public road for, behind us in the church.
Oh, no.
Okay. Just to make that clear, 'cause I know I said that wrong.
Okay.
So is the intention to secure that gate off hours, to lock it?
It's just got a loose chain on it where it's got a V where you could put the chain so it doesn't blow open. But there's no lock on it.
And a neighbor expressed concern that during the fire that was on Stevens Street, that house that burned, that they were not able to get out that direction.
Alls you have to do is.
The street direction, so.
Lift the two chains and.
They wanted to make sure that that was still gonna be.
No, there's no padlock.
And it's an escape rate, wouldn't necessarily.
Are they gonna get rid of that burnt out house? They brought in another house, but the burnt part is still sitting there. I think the only one who would be against it would be the Hale, the Hale property, but I think he's just holding it as a, um...
They were sent letters.
Huh?
They were sent a letter giving them the opportunity to come, so they don't.
I think he's just holding it for resale value down the road. When's voting day?
May sixth.
Sixth.
Seven, seven.
When is that again?
Uh, election day is my sixth, seven to seven. Here's the city hall.
But there's another meeting on this.
Three, six, March the sixth.
I'm sorry, okay, I was making sure I understood.
At seven.
So, uh, y'all are, and then you have a workshop after that as well?
Uh, yes, we did.
No, no, we don't, we have another public hearing or something else.
We have another public hearing or another, another.
But there's a workshop tonight.
Yes.
They're saying get rid of us. Well, I was just gonna bring pizzas, was my point. Because I bet y'all not ever eat while you're going to these workshops or anything?
We hope it doesn't take that long.
I was just getting you ready for in case it did. Okay, well, I, I'm.
It probably wouldn't be a good idea, 'cause it might be seen as bribery, so. So I would not do that. We'll have that out on the lawn.
Right, right.
So there's no quarrel. We give about five more minutes and it'll be seven fifteen. That working like comes in when we have fifteen minute recess before our next rooming workshop.
That you're against it. You did, right? You crossed it off that she's against.
And I had her up as the only opposing person, and since she clarified, I didn't work it off.
You could've told her that instead of me. She said that you had to get to your mom's house first. You have hearing thing on the app. Any cemetery's power, I mean, you know what I mean. But you said you have blue tape. I asked John Brody, but, you know. That's running into him, and then we never help, he forgets. So. Horror is just going on. But it's not comparison, you know. Has the street over by Dollar Tree been legally settled yet?
I think so.
No? There's so many that really needs to be looked at in this town. You ever get caught up on ordinances and this and that and every other thing? They don't pass the whole one as far as roads and stuff go, going back. We probably have better documentation of all the old roads than they do. Because when I was trying to look into when Stevens Street was extended and stuff. Cause the original road to the cemetery was Church Street.
Okay, just one minute, does anybody else have anything you want to say in opposition or for, um, the closing of Stevens Street? At seven fifteen, we will now adjourn the public hearing for closure of Stevens Street. So at seven thirty, we will, uh, start on our permit, uh, fees workshop.
Danny, can we get the price list of what it is as part of the permit?
Oh.
Our Bureau, we're having a paper, Bureau of Veritas.
This is what?
That's not all of it.
The only other thing that Bureau Veritas charges is their inspection fees.
No, that's not what you're talking about.
I just figured I'd give her a warning. I don't know if you're all settled or not. Did you get more chickens?
No, we just have two right now.
You got a chicken house?
Small one.
Yeah. That's cute. The people behind me, the new people behind them bought the house, you know, where the pig guy was. They have ducks and stuff and I just love hearing them quack. It reminds me of home, you know what I mean? Because you don't hear ducks too much, you know, around here.
No, you don't.
They're good people, though. I like them. Well, you and Jackie click, you know.
No, I didn't know that.
Even though they didn't, for months, they didn't do the stuff they were supposed to. And so they told Bobby, you know.
No.
And so Bobby, our Bureau Veritas, said, did you send them a paycheck? So she goes, do you want me to stop here? He goes, no.
Yeah.
Anyway, so...
Yeah, after rates.
Oh, right.
I have another thing. Have anything on charges, how they...
And I think when I started with the job, I said, Bud, you have to... Nester everyone, get a boat.
If they cashed up their checks...
Their, what's it called, was out December thirty first. And if they were decent people, they'd give the check back, that's three thousand dollars. Because she didn't know they quit. I don't know when they told Bobby. They're not, they quit. That's three thousand dollars. We could fix some of those things, you know, the three thousand dollars.
Cash those checks without setting a house.
So do I, but I'm not procrastinating, so. I would've sent them a letter, please return the last two checks you contract for. You didn't, you didn't fulfill it. Tell us that you were leaving in a whatever manner. And...
I'll be coming back to you.
Time or manner.
So therefore, those two checks, you send back to us.
The rates.
How rate card for Bureau Veritas, I think was what they were asking.
I'd have to go look at the book and see to make sure that they're contracted for something.
It's what was agreed upon. The council agreed upon. Because Bureau Veritas said charge, that didn't come to Bureau Veritas.
It doesn't go as far as it used to go, but still. That's stealing. McCraw Oil and Bonham. They pitched him twice. We called them up and told them.
We sent it back and then they sent it back to us again. And she called them up and told them. So finally got a whole, someone knew what they were doing. And she said, okay. Send it to the attention of me. And so Jim said, well, my wife's going to Bonham, can she just oar it?
Right, so, right, so somebody come in.
Sixty-three cents or sixty-six cents.
Has it gone up again?
Yeah, it was sixty. No, it went up again.
Oh, my gosh.
Do I see where they at your hands?
Nice.
Can I get a list of all candidates?
Yep.
Well, we, that will, they, some of these will have to be on my board. We don't...
Did she have anything on...
Right, this is set up before.
Water leaks and stuff like that. What we charge when it has water leak and how we break them down and how long you...
A credit.
Credit.
Okay. I mean, it's just...
How it's broke down, how, you know, how deeply... How they can actually, what they can actually deduct off of there. Or what we actually deduct off of there.
I can walk you through the process. It's not going to be the same. Because there's different, like if you're in town and you have water sewer, obviously you're gonna get a little more...
No, no, I understand that.
There's no, I mean, it's essentially you put in how much they were built for. There's a report, you can pull from RBS that tells you what their average use is. And you put that in there and then it's just the formulas that are in there.
I understand. Can we not get those formulas so we can kind of see?
It's a spreadsheet. I'm printing, it's not gonna print the formula. It's just literally gonna be a worksheet.
They're open and they're running for...
Was it a formula that we added to our spec from?
It's just automatically in there, but yeah.
Is it protected in some way that we can't see the formula? Yeah, if you just, if you just look at the spreadsheet, it'll tell you what the formulas are. What the...
Right, they won't print it for you that way. I can see the formula, yeah, anybody can see the formula.
If you'll share it with me.
The lady that was here.
Produce it.
The elderly later next to...
It pops up in the top of the screen, you're in that field.
Well, it's a dynamic calculation. It'd be different for me. Yeah, but it'll be a, it'll be a calculation far back.
I promise just permit fees, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, roughly, you know, yours will break down like two percent or whatever. And his, maybe two percent, will be along with other calculations.
If I'm gonna change my own hot water heater, I'm not getting a permit, I'm just gonna change it. That's ridiculous.
Have you arrested?
Try it. Just try it.
So, so have you seen the new promulgated real estate forms that ask you if you've had any unpermitted work done on your home?
Our whole house is unpermitted.
So as long as, I mean, that's, that's part of that conversation, right? If you want to be able to truthfully answer no, then you should have permits to display for all the repairs.
We did the plumbing, the wiring, the sheet run.
There were no permit processes when we bought the house and started doing our work.
There's a bunch of them.
That's true.
That's before, before, before.
We have a little bit of water under management. Enough for, you know...
Water heater.
What we need, not for a family, but, and fills up with garbage from the water and clogs it. So we have to keep getting another one, which is only every couple, three or four years. They're only like two hundred bucks. And Jim said, I didn't get to change that out.
In my mind, I could get my arms around, so if that's a billboard, is that a free standing sign? I had a sign in front of my house that said, these...
Yeah, well, what they're supposed to be. They're usually here, so behind.
I would, straight rate, straight rate based on their average usage. Like when I, when I pulled this report from RBS, it said that their average usage is right here.
I understand.
And so if we plug that number in there...
We've got something popping up.
For sewer, they pay thirty-five, thirty-two for their average bill, just for the water sewer, not the water irrigation, obviously. Because ninety-six, eighty-three, so you should adjust it down to the vast.
Yeah, because you wouldn't want to adjust the total bill because it doesn't contain the water, sure.
Oh, he does too.
Saying if you have a water leak, it's just water.
It's her daughter's daughter.
The assumption is automatic, whatever, whatever opens the faucet must come out.
Friday, Saturday and Sunday? Just Friday, Saturday and Sunday, yeah. It's too proof, proof. Even the furniture style and our things.
Right. But it's the same, so it would be anything you would just face the...
I like stuff that's class.
Right, well, you face it all the way, their average usage is right here.
But not the, not the water and sewer, it would be...
I'm sure they brought in a lot of extra stuff from the family because there's a lot of toys and other stuff. Well, I didn't surprise that, but they do, they get rid of stuff they want to get rid of when they're having...
Right.
And there's an adjustment house in RBS where you can put that in.
See, I've been thinking about this way.
And of course, no, at the same time, it would.
Uh, no, all I've found out was... Trinity can make a deal, basically. Not one thing, you know, like federal government or whatever. All you can do is get this, talk it on that, they put it in the paper, at the bottom. There's a contact person. As far as regularly doing other things you're doing. At home, as long as charged...
I don't know, we'll try.
But that's fair, that goes into the federal.
It's now seven thirty, so we will begin our permit fees workshop. Okay, the first on the list is the billing permits fees. Do y'all see any that y'all want to discuss or have any ideas on them?
I believe contractor registration, all of these are legal.
Which one?
All of them. Contractor registration on the backside, every one of them.
Okay, well, let's start, let's start the first one.
Okay.
And go, that way we'll be in order.
All right.
So the billing permits fees, the, what the minimum fees are?
Mm-hmm. So I, my opinion is the fifty dollars needs to go away, period. Comby, Cooper and Honey Grove, all free. If you go in as a contractor, and I can't speak for all the contractors, I can't speak for electrical, you go in there and you get a permit, it depends on what you are doing, whether you even charge for a permit, period. Honey Grove, if you're gonna have to have an inspection, they want an approximate cost on the job and then they calculate it out or whatever for their fee. But like if you're gonna go in and, and change a light switch or a plug or whatever, there is no permit. As long as you're, you know, it's not under an inspectable issue, then you don't, you don't, you don't get a permit. Cooper and Honey, and Comby are about the same way. Now Cooper is a little more lenient on theirs as far as what their requirements are. I mean, we went over and wired a, rewired a whole house and there was no permit. So, I mean, to me, there should have been a permit for that, but that was their choice. So we didn't, we didn't have to get a permit. But I think most places, if you're, if you are changing or adding to whatever the original system, then it's preventable and has to be inspected, so. And to me, all of them, basically, all of them follow along the same lines as far as what we should have to get a permit for.
So do any of these descriptions under electrical permits associate with having to have a permit for...
Billing permits?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're basically, all of these are gonna kind of fall in the same line, so... Like the residential accessory building, it's gonna be, if you're gonna put in a shed or whatever, you know, fences and all that. And this is kind of the way Cooper does theirs. And the reason they do theirs this way... Um, and the, the reason they do theirs this way, uh, like their fences and all, is because they used to not charge anything, or a permit, or a fence, you just put your fence up. But they were having people not do a, um, locate, and they were cutting water lines, and then the city had to come out and repair the water lines. So it was an additional cost for the city, so, um, that's understandable.
So is the, is the permit for the building different than the residential accessory building? What was, what would be the difference in those two?
The, the residential accessory building, that'd be like, like, say, like, a first shed, or whatever you're gonna put in the shed, and you'd get a permit to put that shed in for thirty cents per, a square foot. But in this instance, with this, it's gonna be a minimum of fifty dollars, no matter what, no matter what the permits are.
So what's the, were you saying that a per, moving for a permit for a building is then, is that another house, or is that a storage shed also?
Well, I'd say the accessory building would be shed, but the buildings that are being moved, if you gotta move it in, I'm, I'm assuming that's gonna have to be.
It could be permanent to do this.
Brought in, you know, and, um. This residential accessory building, I'm assuming they're gonna build it on site. Maybe I'm looking at this wrong, I don't know.
Well, we just need to define what we think an accessory building is, and what is a permit for a building, because that's two different.
Right.
Um.
If you're moving it in, or if you're building it on site.
And then you have the occupancy permit for other than new buildings.
Right. So the occupancy permit, to me, would be more like, um, well, if somebody bought one of these buildings around here, and they wanted to open up something, or whatever, they'd have to have an occupancy permit. And that's the way I understand it.
Now, is that commercial only, then, or is that commercial and residential?
It doesn't define, but I, again, I, I would think.
But we need to define it.
I understand, I understand, that's, that's true, so if you, you come in here and you, um. Build, I, I, if you rent a house, surely you would have to get an occupancy permit, you know, but does this pertain to that? I don't know. It's the wording though, ain't it?
And, I mean, we're here to change the wording, and.
And if you build one. Yeah.
So it can be, uh, even more eas- a little bit, easily, uh, understood, or?
So if you, if you build a house, you're gonna go, you're gonna fall under these other permits.
You have a new residence or?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So this would be for an existing building, um. I would say commercial only, I, I don't know. Is there any, any other instances that you would occupy a building rather be commercial or residential? Maybe you should read occupancy permit for other than new commercial building.
Couldn't, shouldn't, uh, commercial fees be more than residential?
Yeah.
Is that what you're charging? Is that what we charge? Nothing changes. Regardless of whether you call commercial speaking.
It's sure.
It's.
No, no, it's thirty cents per word.
Yeah, thirty, yeah, word, word.
Commercial, you see what it says.
She's talking about the occupancy permit.
Oh, I can see, I, I can't see.
She's not a major.
Commercial, more.
I, I think so, I think that should read occupancy permit for other than new, so, in other words, a, a, an existing commercial building.
I actually would take out the word new.
Yeah.
Because they, even new or old, they should be paying an, an occupancy permit. Because part of that has to come down to.
Well, the, the new one, though, is gonna be included in their building of it.
Check it.
Yeah. And then when you say that.
I'm trying really hard not to move down to a lower section here, but, so that's, that's the question, right? So if I want to build a two thousand square foot house.
Mm-hmm.
The new residential permit is six hundred dollars. What does that include? Does that include electrical? It looks like it.
Yes.
Yeah, that would include all of it.
This, this, okay, so here's the thing, they were actually, this actually was done prior to Bureau Veritas. So these new residential one family, at thirty cents a square foot, is actually, does probably need to be struck off, because Bureau Veritas actually has a calculator, and it's. If you're building a single-family residence, and this includes site, site plan review, all your permits, inspections, and all that, it's like seven hundred and eighty-three dollars.
But that's only if you go through them.
You'd be paying those dollars in the city, right? That's, but that's for your inspections and your site plan, who here's gonna do site plan review?
I, I, I don't know, I'm just, you know, if, if that's, if that's required, it's required, you know, whether they do it through Bureau Veritas or somebody else. I mean, they shouldn't be, um. They shouldn't be. They should not have to use them for site plan reviews. But when you don't, then you're gonna have to get into something to where you're gonna have to approve whoever they use for a site plan review.
Right, that's why it's a city.
It's an issue of trust.
We have a contract with Bureau Veritas for that reason.
Yeah, and, and really, we don't. Talk, talking to them, um. We only pay them for whatever we use them for.
Right.
So if, if they're gonna have to use Bureau Veritas for new buildings. Then that needs to be incorporated into the building permits fee, instead of what it is now. And that's something else that. I'm. I know Cooper had to have, um. An engineer's drawings and everything else for, for an RV park that was put in. It did not go through Bureau Veritas, but they did have to have that. And they just had to go through the council to get everything approved.
Do we have an updated packet from Bureau Veritas that would tell us what their definitions are, procedures are, rates are, like it said?
Same one that we, that was adopted back in twenty-one.
Has it been updated, and have they adjusted their rates at all?
Mm-mm, they have not, they've restored it to what they find, it's the same rates.
How, how, how in alignment is this, what their rates are?
Um, so this is, this came from them, it's, it's residential construction, up to fifteen hundred square feet, and this is inspections and permits, site plan review, everything is eight twenty-five. Um, from fifteen oh one to up to ten thousand square feet is eight twenty-five, plus thirty-five cents for each additional square foot, up to and including ten thousand square feet. So this is actually not.
Not nearly a hundred.
Twenty dollars. So like theirs, we were asking about, so, so, essentially, it says certificate of occupancy, they, theirs is actually a hundred dollars.
And that's for.
Well, it just says trade permits.
Yeah, but it's, that's, that's, see, that's what I know, they.
But it says alteration slash addition for residential construction.
Yeah. We, uh, I mean, why would we go through them for an occupancy permit?
Who's gonna do the inspection?
Right, so a commercial occupancy load has to be established, and they're the ones who establish that, based on.
But you're gonna get a final inspection on.
Inspections and, and occupancy load are two separate issues.
Yeah, but, because your inspections, like you're.
Y'all are co-main link things here, so, that are not the same.
But it can be, that's what I'm saying, if, if they have all their inspection is done, and they get a final inspection, why can't they occupy?
What if it's an existing structure?
Because you need to know what, yeah, you need to know what your maximum occupancy load for a building is, for instance, Dollar General, if they, if their occupancy load is.
A hundred people, wherever, I understand that, yeah.
A hundred people, right, right. There's a, there's a formula that they use that sets that, based on square footage and things of that nature.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I can, I can see that.
And I'm gonna, this is just my personal concern with something that was said a second ago, with Cooper, they took it to their council, and their council approved this RV park. You now have established the possibility of the next person that comes in, if you don't approve theirs, you could be. Not sued, but you could be accused of favoritism. That's why a third-party company who's not connected in any way, shape, or form to the town, in that aspect, is probably for the best at this point. Until the city can possibly hire someone.
Well, all they're, all they're looking at, at that point in time, is if, um, they've got all their engineer drawings and all that.
But if the engineer drawings are not, and of course, I don't know what Cooper's, um, ordinancees look like, what their setbacks are. If the setbacks aren't correct, and somebody comes along and says, you know what, this setback was supposed to be twenty feet, and y'all approved it at ten, well, now I want you to approve mine at ten.
Um, yeah, but you're, you're gonna have that same situation, um, with anywhere, I mean, that, they're doing, they're doing the same thing with the commissioner's court. I mean, you go to commissioner's court, and you want a specific something on your, for our specific property, and they approve it, well, then the next person comes along, well, you approved theirs, well, we didn't approve yours, so. I mean, they're going through that right now.
Is it a question of qualifications, then? Because I don't, I mean, I'm not qualified to look at a site plan and determine whether or not it's got the right.
Correct. Yes. Setbacks.
Permanente water, you know.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I, and I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm in agreement with that, I'm not at all saying, no, we shouldn't do that, I'm saying, um, it shouldn't be. When you are, you, when you are forcing them to use, it's a company, um, that also entails, um. Hey, why do you, why do I have to use them?
Is there anything that would keep us from having two vendors?
No, y'all can find a secondary vendor.
Okay, so, so walk me through the process.
Okay.
Somebody wants to build a new house.
Mm-hmm.
They come in the city hall.
Mm-hmm.
What do you, what do you have to do for that?
They give, they give us the, uh, the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
That gets sent over to Bureau Veritas, for them to verify with our current ordinance setbacks and all that, then they, yes, they tell you yes or no.
So what fee do you charge them first? Going by this list, what do you charge?
If they're building a brand new home, single-family home, then it's, um, it's actually not that, the Bureau Veritas, theirs, it's about seven hundred and eighty-three dollars.
So then why do we have this list?
And like I said before, this one was adopted prior to Bureau Veritas being approved to be.
So this is what we charge, excuse me, is what we charged them before we took.
Correct, yes.
So we're not charging them the same rate or dollars that you just said?
We weren't, we are now, we have been since y'all adopted Bureau Veritas.
So this list didn't any good, because you've got a cer- different list over there, Bureau Veritas.
Um, well, it's a, it's a calculator on the computer, yeah. I mean, some of these fees are still, some of these fees are still, yes, because like, they don't do, like, the re- the residential accessory building, they don't, they don't site plan review those.
But if we're sitting here saying.
That's why I said, some of this stuff needs to be scratched off.
You've got all these people out here, then.
That's why I said, some of these items, y'all will need to scratch them off.
But we don't know.
Y'all need to strike them off.
But, see, you got a different list than what they got.
I, second, I told y'all, y'all will need to strike off the res- the new residential, the thirty cents per square foot, that'll eventually need to be struck off.
On both of those items?
Mm-hmm, because it's based on.
If we choose.
Correct, yeah.
Or we can set a set fee of, um, right, is that what you're saying?
Well, the idea is, the fee that they're charged, right, the idea is, they come in, they pay for a permit, that permit includes the inspection fee.
Correct.
Right, so if we're charging five hundred and it costs seven fifty.
Then we're undercutting ourselves on that.
The inspection fee for what? The, everything, the.
Yeah, well, for whatever, I wanna build a two thousand square foot house, and I calculate that six hundred dollars based on this sheet.
Mm-hmm.
But there's also a final inspection.
Right.
Right, which I can't tell from looking at this, if that's included in my new building permit fee, or if that's just site review and.
Separate.
Engineering, whatever, so.
No, right. So you, you calculated six hundred just for building permit fees, and then the inspections should, would have been another four hundred dollars, so that right there is a thousand dollars.
Okay.
But.
And Veritas puts seven hundred and eighty of it.
Right.
And we're left with whatever.
Right.
The city ain't taking nothing off, they're looking at, uh-uh, we need to change that.
And much else, y'all can do that, but see, at one point in time. And much else, y'all can do that, but see, at one point in time, nobody wanted to charge more than what they were. Than what Bureau Veritas, because they didn't feel that it was right to keep charging the citizens for those types of things, yes, I know.
Well, I was understanding that we were gonna work on the fees so that we could get, um. What's the guy called, to inspect? Um, give out the tickets?
Code enforcement?
Yeah, code enforcement.
So it's something more along an inspector's, building inspector?
Right, code enforcement and building inspector are two separate people.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, but yes, they, they do have two different qualifications.
So is there, is there another vendor besides Bureau Veritas that services this area, which are there?
Not that I know of.
Is there anybody with names?
I'm sure we could do a Google search.
That's Bureau Veritas, I mean, surely there does, no, nobody else is serving us there.
I can contact.
Cause if there's a concern about us only providing one vendor for inspections, then it's not, it doesn't create. It's some sort of burden on the office, on you, on the office staff to manage that. Um, I don't have a problem with saying, here's, here's the rate card for Bureau Veritas, here's the rate card for these guys.
Pick which one you want.
Pick which one you wanna use and that'll determine the fees that you pay.
So does that one have a permit for moving buildings in?
No, that was something that was added on prior to. Except they don't, Bureau Veritas, their main concern really is new construction. Or if someone has to.
Renovation.
renovate. An existing structure. All these other things like, um, moving permits for buildings, that's a.
They don't get involved in that, cause they don't inspect it, so.
Or the demolition they can.
Right, correct, demolition they don't get involved in. Um.
And if there's, it wasn't obvious to me at the after-hours inspection, I mean, okay, yeah, I'd rather do an after-hours inspection than a regular one, cause it's stupid.
Well, no, no.
It looks like it's probably an add-on.
It's an additional, yeah.
Okay, so then for new residential, comment for building it.
Mm-hmm.
Is seven hundred eighty-three dollars, which includes. Your fee for your electrical, water.
Gas.
Gas and plumbing.
HVAC, all that.
So you're. So we could put that out there, right? Seven eighty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of the thirty cents per square.
Right.
Okay, so now on the commercial and multifamily construction. Does it have a specific?
Mm-mm, it's based off of, except there's a calculator in there on the.
Yeah, square footage also.
Mm-hmm.
So.
In that one.
Okay, now, on the residential, there's no base on square footage, it's just a straight rate?
It's a straight rate, on, on single-family resident, it's a straight rate.
And so we would mark out our thirty, thirty cents per square foot.
A hundred and fifty thousand square foot house, it's the same as a two thousand square foot house.
Cause all your other fees are included.
But that doesn't make sense. I, I mean.
But Russell just added a month and there were six hundred dollars if you did them separately.
I, I understand, but.
Well, I had a question about that, cause I couldn't tell if the final ins- or the inspections were an additional. Or if the inspections were included and just the basic building permit fees.
No. Permit fees and inspection fees under a normal umbrella are two separate entities.
Well, in that case.
But, under Bureau Veritas, they are combined.
So seven eighty-three, we get it.
Correct.
The final inspection.
Mm-hmm.
Were the thousand dollars separately.
Correct. Yes.
So, on the commercial and multifamily new construction.
That one would need to be worked in. Basically adds per.
We could up that square footage.
Yeah.
Um. Should commercially be more than multifamily.
Uh, no, I should consider the same.
But one, one, what it's, it's.
It, it kinda runs from the same vein, I guess, is, is commercial though.
You have any ideas on that?
Sorry, I'm just doing some research here.
Okay, the fences, pools, remodels, you got five dollars right there.
For every, for each one thousand dollar cost. Fences, pools, remodels, general repairs, et cetera, for each one thousand dollar cost is five dollars. So essentially, for every. Thousand dollars of valuation, it's five dollars, so if you say your fence is gonna be a three thousand dollar fence, the permit fee's fifteen dollars.
Yeah, we'll leave that at that.
So as long as it's covering whatever costs there are associated with actually doing the permit work, how long does it take to do a fence permit?
I was gonna say, people can have those made up, I mean, or you just get the piece by ground.
I, I have a template, but.
Yeah.
There'll be a checklist too, not just the permit, but have you called eight hundred digits, you know, do you have the results of that, is there?
Right, they should, you should get a, um, ticket ID code, something, yeah, your eight-one-one, line number.
Okay, we're, right here, I'm seeing. The fee schedule for commercial and multifamily. Uh, if it's ten thousand. Valuation to twenty-five thousand, it's one amount, and if it's. You know, a million dollars enough, then it's another amount. So that's why I'm asking about this. You know, the square footage and all that. This doesn't say. Yes, it does. The square footage on a. Fifteen hundred square foot house is seven eighty-five.
Oh, yeah.
But fifteen hundred to ten thousand is another amount, over ten thousand is another amount.
Let me go look at the calculator that they sent us.
Oh, over ten thousand shows thirty-seven hundred and sixty dollars for the first ten thousand. Plus fifteen cents for additional square footage. Square foot. Over ten thousand. That makes more sense. Than the straight seven eighty-three.
Are you talking about for a new, new family home?
Yes, yes, single-family.
Yep, so that, how, what would be the prices again?
Um. Fifty, up to fifteen hundred to seven eighty-five. And then it goes from fifteen hundred to ten thousand. And it is seven eighty-five for the first fifteen hundred. And then it's an additional thirty-five cents for each square foot. Um. To and including ten thousand square foot.
And that includes all the other permit fees you touched on?
It really doesn't say that on this schedule, so. But I, I'm assuming, yes.
And over ten thousand would be?
Over ten thousand is three thousand seven hundred and sixty. For the first ten thousand. And then. Fifteen cents for each additional over ten thousand.
Does it say in the that commercial?
That is.
That's residential.
That is.
Residential.
Construction or improvement of a residential dwelling. So. That's got kinda hard to bite off when you, when you're talking about, if you go in there and remodel a place and it costs you the same thing as new construction. That doesn't make sense, but that's what it says.
So we just need to say what we wanna do.
I think you can rewrite your contract with Bureau Veritas.
All right, hang on a minute now.
But we can rewrite it?
But you can rewrite it to, like, remodel.
Alterations, additions, improvements for residential construction. Trade permits. Uh, building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fuel, gas, and similar, hundred dollars per trade. Other project types not listed above, hundred and sixty dollars per trade. I don't know what they'd be, but.
Go over there, bud.
I, I think that. The new residential and commercial and multifamily, you're gonna have to just strike those and put in there, see. Uh, alternative fees or something from Bureau Veritas or whatever, look at the fees for them. Cause it's, it's, it's not anything set in stone, it's gonna be this amount. You know, it's gonna be per. Per, uh, project, whatever you're doing.
So long as it's only able to be seen one way.
Leaving.
Like. Like Russell can't go in there and they give him one price board, and you go in there and they give you a different price.
Oh, right, I.
It needs to be the one.
Straight across.
Straight across.
Oh, yeah, no, there's, there's just, the calculator's on that computer, it's a Excel spreadsheet that they sent over.
Right.
And you type it in.
You, you'll have to type in the.
Either based on the square footage or the valuation depending upon if it's commercial or residential, we haven't had anything over the minimum, so.
Yes.
So, am I understanding right that we're gonna strike both the new residential and commercial in? And go with what?
Yeah.
I, I just don't, for anything that has anything to do with any kind of permitting for any kind of construction or additions or remodels. I just, unless we're gonna refer to whatever the rate card is for the vendor. We're gonna be guessing. Um, and that just means more work for us on an ongoing basis, if somebody revises their prices. Then we have to go back and update our rate card and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think we should just say, hey, you're gonna have to revert to the vendor rates.
Yeah, well, here, yeah, here's the process, we use vendor Bureau Veritas, or we use these other guys, here's the process. Um, here's their rates, you know, and, and whatever we need to do on an annual basis to.
Update.
update it or approve it or.
Yeah.
Whatever the list like, I just feel like there's.
This contract was started in March of twenty-one and they have not raised their rates, so.
And from a vendor management standpoint, I like the one throat-to-choke approach.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we, here's the vendor that we use, this is your one option, cause we have to. Unless we put some constraints in there, somebody's gonna say, well, I'm not happy with what Bureau Veritas is doing, can I get a credit and move to the other guy?
Right.
And then we're, and then, I don't know how much work that creates, but if it happens once, it'll happen a thousand times.
Yeah, where's the city, and you just pick one, I think, and then, and go with it?
Yeah, and, and manage that vendor in a way that keeps, keeps the city and the residents happy.
Okay, so, with that being said, how, y'all wanna word the new residential and commercial? Cause that's what I'm hearing, that we're changing both of those.
Can I make a suggestion, I would just strike everything in this.
No.
Cause we can always re, I can, we can redo it.
Yeah, but you don't wanna, you don't, you wanna leave the residential accessory building?
Right.
They don't.
Well, we want to either. The permits for buildings and the residential accessory building. So maybe they either be combined or. We need to charge one price instead of thirty cents here for square foot and then seventy more dollars. Cause that's the way I'm, you know, kinda reading that.
Well, that's hopefully, I mean, okay, so help me out here, so if, if I have a, if I have a shed brought onto my property.
Right.
Does that require me to get a residential accessory building permit fee?
Right.
Cause I'm not building anything.
Right.
Or does it require me to get a moving?
It says residential accessory building.
Moving permits for buildings.
Not building, billing.
So is it, is that, is that a noun or a verb?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. That would be a noun, I would think.
Okay, so, what if I want electrical in that building? Do I have to pull a permit for loop? Potential meter loop?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If, if it's required for that building, yeah, I mean, if you can, again, if you bring it off of your house or garage or whatever. Um. That is an addition to the system that's existing, and so you need a permit to tie that building in.
Okay, so, is that, I don't, I. I don't want them to have to guess, I mean.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Bureau Veritas is.
We just wanna know.
It's a new, it's a new shed, but they want electrical and they want a toilet in there. Here's all the permits that they need, here's the cost, is that the way it works?
Yeah, but it'd all be separate though.
That, yeah, that was, cause it's not considered a new residential.
You're, you're bringing in a building that. Either it has, we'll say, first of all, we'll say it has the electrical sewer and everything, and it just has to have the, has to be tied in. Or you bring in a building that doesn't have any of that stuff. Then you gotta permit to put that stuff in that building. I mean.
There is a, yeah, there's a caveat, because there are some that, and I can't think of who it was, that they brought in a shed, but it was already.
Rewired.
Rewired.
Yeah.
So, it was like, well. Right, it was a, yeah, well, it was, cause you know it was approved because it was off the back third floor. So you hope.
So you hope, yeah, that's the highest I'll say.
So, yeah.
That's, that's when you get into, well, who, who approved it, you know, who says it, so.
So what's the difference in a temporary meter and a variable loop?
A temporary meter is just temporary pole, not permanent.
For so long or?
It gets real tight right there, because. You can put in a temporary pole and there's no time period.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. If you put in a permanent pole, then there's different stipulations, so. I mean, if I was putting one in, it would be the cheaper one, what is it?
They're both same.
Yeah.
Temporary is fourteen and the variable is fourteen.
I'll call in an additional meter loop, because that's dollars versus fourteen dollars.
Yeah, dollars.
Yeah.
So I, I, so, I mean, I, my recommendation would be, try to find a way to remove from this everything that's covered by the Bureau Veritas. Process, and then just have the additional. You know, what we would charge, if we've gotta call a B and Z meeting, or if we've gotta do whatever.
Right, right.
Okay, so. Right up here at the top, where it says residential accessory building. And moving permits for a building.
My understanding of moving permits is.
I would keep that separate.
Right.
Because you're moving.
So you don't get charged for both?
For instance.
No, no.
No.
No, because you're moving.
Define.
Yeah, you're moving in a building. Cause it, it's telling you moving permits for buildings. So you're moving a building, whether it be from Commerce to here or.
And you're saying your residential accessory building is that you're building it on the property?
Yes.
It changed to a verb, Russell.
Okay.
Education, isn't it? Okay, we're gonna leave it at thirty cents per square foot, or we're gonna put it just a, an amount?
Flat rate? I mean, anything under two hundred, like, I just did the math on that. A ten by ten.
I kinda like to say it's flat rate, but it's whatever.
Well, if it's a ten by ten, it's, you know, or, or is it a hundred by hundred?
Right. So a ten by ten.
I mean, are you building a shop or are you building a shed? It's an accessory building, whichever.
Is that what I'm saying, a flat rate? That was just my thought.
Yeah.
That's what the number B is designed to be.
Well, I guess that, so then, okay, so what you're saying, flat rate, somebody's building a hundred, ten by ten. They're gonna pay the same amount as somebody who's building a.
Hundred by hundred?
Hundred by hundred? How about?
Same way you get the. Same way you got the residential up here.
For square footage?
No, we're not doing square footage anymore. Bureau Veritas is doing seven hundred and.
Well.
Well, it does go up.
It varies.
Mm-hmm, it does.
Completely, and the, on size.
Yeah. Their, their base rate is seven eighty-five, I said seventy, thirty-five or seven, whatever I said earlier. Seven eighty-five, yeah. So that's up to fifteen hundred square feet, after fifteen hundred square feet, up to ten thousand, it's the seven eighty-five plus an additional thirty-five cents for additional square footage. From fifteen, so say you're building, hold on, let me, let me pull out a calculator.
Okay, so what do y'all wanna do?
Okay, so if they're, if they're building a ten by ten, it, at thirty cents a square foot, it's gonna cost them thirty dollars. So, you know.
I would start off the minimum fee and.
Take off the minimum and just, just do a, uh, per square foot, just leave it at that.
Y'all gonna leave it at thirty, or y'all good with that?
Well, I'm saying, leave it at thirty cents a square foot.
That's what I'm saying, are y'all good with leaving it at thirty?
Yeah, I think so.
Russell?
Just, just judging a ten by ten.
So, to move.
The only, the only concern I have is about how much time it actually takes to do all this stuff, if somebody, I mean.
It didn't take long, somebody tells me my building's ten by twenty-four, I just calculate or it's, that's.
So she's already got it in.
This many square feet.
The formulas is up in there.
Times point three.
Okay.
Doesn't take that long.
Somebody's sorry about leaving money on the table, so that's my bigger concern? If that's something that we wanna think about.
Exactly, that's what I'm talking about.
I think that's the reason for the minimum fee, because if you know it's under a hundred square, or whatever.
Right.
Hundred fifty square feet.
Yeah, but.
It's fifty bucks.
How often are you really gonna get a ten by ten, I mean, most people are gonna go bigger than that.
And it depends on if you're buying it at Sam's or.
Right, right.
Okay, so y'all gonna leave the minimum fee on there, or?
I, I'd strike it, just put it thirty cents a square foot, no matter what.
Okay, do y'all agree? Okay, demolition, is that something we do with y'all?
Okay, the fences is the next one.
Well, we said five dollars.
Leave it at that.
Yeah.
So, your Veritas doesn't have anything to do with fences, pools, remodels, or general repairs?
They've got.
They probably do pools.
They've got their trade permits, and they do actually have a fence permit, they're saying it's seventy-five dollars, no matter what, but.
Yeah, because that's what they're charging, that's what we.
They don't inspect it, so we don't have to use their fee for that.
Their fees, uh, some of them are outrageous.
I also would leave it at that.
Some of them, we don't have a choice if we use them.
Yeah, I've had one. I've had one person.
Then we have to pay their fees.
For a fence permit.
Well, so the disclaimer on all this needs to be, whatever Bureau Veritas's fee is, overrides whatever we might have on here, because otherwise we're gonna.
Right, correct.
Get shorted as a city.
Well, she said we could, we wrote, word that though, if we only, we already have this five dollar fee on here, then, since somebody inspects it.
Yeah, we don't have to.
Then we don't have to use them on that part of it.
Yeah, and this was, I mean, this was just a process of their suggestions on some of these, some of it is.
Okay, the demolition of buildings?
I'm not sure why they're both fifty.
Yeah, what's, and again, what's the process? Somebody wants to tear a building down?
I, I mean, for them. Yeah, come get a permit.
And then we don't care how it's left?
No, no.
Or are they gonna, is somebody gonna come inspect? To make, to make sure that there's not an open hole, or.
Yeah.
An open pit, or something that somebody could get hurt in, kid falls into.
Yeah, we don't have.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you the, the demolition, if Bureau Veritas comes out here, this is at fifty dollars, you're gonna pay more than that.
Right.
Their minimum fee is.
And I don't know, I mean, you know if they'll come out and inspect.
I, I don't think they will.
Yeah.
And then you got your phone cord, and then that's gonna cover, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, you, you've got your ordinances and everything in place, you know, as far as somebody tears something down, you know, leaving it there or whatever. Again, we have to have somebody to take care of those ordinances, I don't think we're on there, but, you know, that's.
So do we want to leave it at fifty, then, or are y'all okay with that? Okay, and, um.
Maybe we should just, uh. Say maybe, maybe we should do one, just demolition of buildings, period.
We just have one?
Yeah.
That's beautiful. Are y'all good with that, just one, one idea?
Yeah, no, no longer over.
So the moving permits for the buildings, we're going with seventy, do we want in?
Okay, so my question is.
They want it outside.
Right, so are we, for instance, move the homes when they get moved in? That's with thirty cents hanging in.
Can't do that.
It's coming back to me now. So Bureau Veritas does not inspect mobile homes when they get moved in.
Well, he's got to, he's.
So that's where the thirty cents per square foot comes into play, and that was based off size. I knew there was something, and it was only for mobile homes, because if they're moving it in, it's an eighteen, we'll say it's an eighteen hundred square foot mobile home. They were supposed to be paying, you know, thirty cents a square foot, plus the seventy dollar moving fee, because it's on the city streets. So essentially, they were paying five hundred forty dollars to move it in, that's their permit to move in the mobile home at eight, at an eighteen hundred square foot.
But you're saying on the city street, but if they don't use the city street.
How they don't move in a mobile home down the city street, information?
Okay, we'll take Delicia's for example, she, they didn't use the city street, they came through the pastures. And they're into the county.
No, no, seriously.
No, I understand, I understand.
They came through the county, and so it never went on the street. And I'm just throwing that one out there.
But that's, yeah, so they wouldn't have to pay that, they, she would only be responsible then for.
It doesn't say anything about street utilization on this, is, is it, is it in the city?
It is, but she just said down the city streets, and that's the only reason I brought that up.
That's how the moving thing is written in the ordinance.
Uh, that's what I'm saying, it's got, it needs to be, you know.
Clarify.
Clear, because.
Hopefully quiet on you.
It is in the streety, city, but she just said if you come down city streets, well, if you don't use the city street.
Right, and, and they would have, they should have, they should give, like, they would have had to get a.
Well, you can't get, you can't make corners.
Yeah.
Are you crossing an easement though, like a utility easement of some kind, is there a chance you're gonna damage the sewer or the?
Probably did, they probably did.
Sewer land or what?
Not out there.
Because it was set.
But that doesn't mean anything, we run water out into the county.
Oh, my God.
So.
But anyway.
Anyways, yeah.
I was just throwing that out there.
But they would have to, you know, normally, it's, it's.
I ain't got water leak in here.
You know, in order to move a building that large, they probably got something from text dot.
Okay, back, back up.
I guess he did, I don't know.
Yeah.
Back up a second.
They usually get their own permit.
The thirty cents, that's where you threw me.
Mobile homes only, manufactured homes.
Okay, so where's that fall in this list?
Mobile homes or manufactured?
They're residential.
Manufactured, because we don't allow mobiles in the city.
Okay, well, what about the ones that are like, um, no, I'm just.
I know.
Uh, what are those little houses, those houses called? No, 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 no.
Uh, modular.
Modular homes.
Same, manufactured or modular.
Manufactured homes.
Yeah.
There's, there's, modular and manufactured are considered, pretty much one of the same, well.
E, you.
Manufactured homes typically come in on wheels, like, like Delicia's did, a modular home comes in, here's the wall, and it comes in on a truck and they erect it.
But it comes in on wheels too.
It, does, but, but not on one piece, but not on, on two pieces, it's a double. Right, yeah, it's like, it comes in on a, on a big truck.
But, but a trucker house and a, and a manufactured house is the same thing, other than.
Right.
It's certified different. It's just totally in the certification, how everything, they wrote it up on the.
So, well, you probably need to use.
So you gotta be real careful with that kind of stuff.
So the new residential, so I would actually say new resident, I would, new residential, or it's not even new, because we allow it to ten years old, according to our ordinances, so.
But it's new to the city.
Again, verbiage.
I understand.
Uh, let's see, hold on, let me think, so.
Somebody just needs to keep track of definitions, it's just.
Right.
So, so if you bring in a, if you bring in a mobile home, you gotta pay the, the moving, the per, the building permit, the moving permit plus you have to pay.
Thirty cents a square foot.
Thirty cents a square foot.
Yeah, so manufactured.
Okay.
Hold on, manufactured, modular, what else are they calling them nowadays? We don't allow mobile homes, according to our ordinance.
There's, there's three of them now, and I don't remember what the other one is.
Manufactured, modular.
I don't remember what it is.
I'll do, that, those are supposed to be thirty cents a square foot, that's where that thirty cents a square foot was coming, was really.
It's not allowed.
Coming into play. Plus the seventy dollars to move, building permits on city streets.
Going through the pasture, I mean.
Yeah, don't.
Serious, is that the definition, if it moves on the city street?
That, uh, Debbie, hand me that brown book right in front of you, I do believe that's how it's moved in here.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons we're gonna rewrite that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me find it, give me a minute.
There's not many that wouldn't go down the city street, it just happens where.
State highway.
Right, and see, those should have, those would have been permitted for, should have, should, let me rephrase that, shouldn't have been permitted through text dots.
Yeah.
Should have been, as well.
Maybe they have to do too.
Well, I mean, because you, you're, it's, the impact.
Both streets.
Right, the impact of what it's doing to the road area.
Yeah, the weight of the load. The hell is that, seventy dollars and what?
Thirty cents per square foot.
I just put, wrote in, mobile to manufactured is moving plus residential permits.
Where's the rest of this chapter?
Is it in this brown book?
Oh, no, let me see that one, because that chapter is incomplete.
Some of them are different.
Okay, uh, so what about the occupancy permit?
We were gonna change some wording in that.
Commercial, to new commer, to new commercial buildings.
Permit for.
We're just gonna leave it at occupancy permit, period?
For other commercial buildings.
For other.
Commercial buildings.
For other commercial buildings, yeah.
Oh, not, not for other, for, for commercial buildings.
Not even new. Yeah. Am I gonna leave it at five dollars?
No, that's not right either, because we keep, we're not charging them for a new commercial building.
Oh, that's right, that's, so it was other than, okay.
Occupancy permit for commercial buildings.
It should be occupancy permit for other than new.
Commercial buildings.
Buildings.
Okay, so we're leaving that at fifteen?
Yeah.
So is that a fire marshal? Who initiates that process?
What process?
The occupancy permit.
It's larger than regular. They should be occupancy.
If we had fire marshals, yeah.
Well, we do, but how? They should be over us.
Yeah, but I don't think they'll come over here and do that.
They don't, um, typically, that's, I mean, like I said, the only one we've had issue was for Dollar General.
Cities have handled that.
And they, Dollar General, excuse me, Bureau Veritas handled it, for the Dollar General stuff.
So if it's in the Bureau Veritas, then.
They'll handle it.
Yeah, we don't need to specify the pricing issue.
Don't need to specify the pricing?
Yeah, if they've got a price for it, then.
Do they have a price for it? Veritas, they have a price for it.
It was, it was part of Dollar General's, so I'd have to find out what it is, if it's other than.
So it's not listed in your bill?
No.
Okay, so it's not.
Okay.
So what we're saying is, do we need to get one, do we need to put one in there?
Put one what in where?
A charge.
We don't have anybody that can do it.
I'll need to find out what Bureau Veritas charges for it, that's what we're gonna have to do.
For just an occupancy.
For an existing building, basically, if that's even something they'll do.
Okay.
That'll be a question for them.
Okay, the signs, do you make another?
No.
I think my only concern there is definitions.
Okay, signs, okay.
So if I wanna, so if somebody wants to put a sign up on a building, that's fifty bucks, right?
What if they paint it? What if they paint it?
What if they paint the sign in?
The side of the building, yeah, you've seen on.
Yes, you can paint, you can paint something on the side of the building.
Murals, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Is that a billboard?
Something.
Is that a billboard though?
No, because there's a difference between art and.
Yes, there is.
But. It's something that's gonna, it's not just about a permit, that's about an approval process, right?
I believe that, that it would be.
Yeah, just to put one up, yeah. Yeah, to slide it or whatever, or electrical, then that's falls under something different and different things like that.
Okay, so how are we gonna treat these signs?
What do you mean?
The charges on.
I think that sounds okay.
Yeah, I, I think they're good.
And then if there's an electrical permit, it's a.
Then they, then they gotta go and get that, yeah, spec, specific permit.
The electrical permits?
This is all in the beauty process?
No.
Not necessarily.
Well, no, not.
No.
You don't have to use them.
So, if they're, well, we always use them for any electrical.
I thought we were just saying that we're gonna use Bureau Veritas, but it's strategic.
As it stands right now, we use them for trade permits essentially, which are, you're electrical, and if it's not associated with a new, that permit plus inspection fee is a flat one point five. That's their seventy-six, um.
Ninety-two.
Something like that, seventy-six ninety-two, that they charge to do inspections. Um, and then essentially fifty dollars. Because that's your minimum for that.
And see, that's, that's, that's where I have a problem with it. I, I don't think there should be a minimum, period. But I don't think all of these should, the ones listed here probably should be permitted. But they are a little bit vague on what you have to have a permit on, because if you call Bureau Veritas, if you go to Sam's house down here and put a switch in, you gotta have a permit.
Right.
And you don't have to anywhere else.
So, okay, so which of these describes what you just said?
But wouldn't that really only be if, if they're requesting a.
New circuit or?
Inspection of that.
That's what I'm saying, um, Bureau Veritas, if you talk to them, they say you gotta have the inspection and all that.
Permit and inspection, right.
But anybody else, I say anybody, I use that word loosely, three different places, they don't require it at all.
And we can make an exception, I mean, we can accept anything.
I mean, you don't see that on here, it's, it's.
Right, I mean, we can literally say, if you're just, if somebody wants to change our light switch, you're not gonna have a permit for that.
Right, but we wanna stay within the boundaries of is, you know, are we legal with that, are we okay with that? Because right now, uh. Because right now, um, I, I mean.
I mean, these are, if, if we're using this as the set of electrical permits that we're gonna issue, and none of these describe that kind of work.
Then.
Then it's, then it's not unpermitted work if I do something that doesn't require a permit.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I understand what Bureau Veritas said, but we don't have that stipulation here, so.
That's, that's kinda what I'm getting at.
They can say what they want.
And that, that's why I'm saying you don't. When I say you don't have to use Bureau Veritas, if we need an inspection, we need to use Bureau Veritas or some vendor, okay? So, but we need to make sure that it is understood that there are certain things that don't require a permit, so.
Okay, so are we marking out the, the fee then? Or are we marking out, I mean, what are you opening in this section?
Uh, I don't think there should be a minimum fee.
Again, I'm, I'm fine with that, so long as we cover whatever the cost for.
Yeah.
I mean, well, the new construction, commercial and multifamily, that's included within, again, the.
The building permit.
Constructive of all the, of the Veritas's.
We would never allow construction of a house that would be, would not meet the minimum fee, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're gonna mark out new construction then?
I would, yes.
Because it's already.
Mm-hmm.
Already listed.
It's already taken care of.
Yeah, okay, we're sure that's true.
Yes.
Okay.
Temporary major in the meter loop?
We, I have never had anybody come and ask for it, but that doesn't mean it won't happen, of course, I don't know.
I don't know what it is, so.
Oh, yes, well, yeah.
Did we?
Yeah, headquarters. For a house.
Was hers a meter loop or a temporary meter?
Uh, uh-huh.
Uh-huh. Yes.
It's one of them, it's a meter pole.
I'm gonna need a denomination on both of those.
So what, so what is, what is the meter loop?
It is the, is the meter base, what, what the meter put, gets put in, okay, so.
Where's the loop at?
That is, that's what it's called.
So, is the, does the meter loop include a meter?
That's, the meter loop is the box that the meter goes in.
The round.
So the meter loop does not include the meter.
Okay, we, you can't, we can't charge for the meter, because that's utilities, that's utility company, we have nothing to do with that.
Yeah, that's all.
So why are we charging fourteen dollars for a temporary meter?
It, it's actually, it's actually.
Especially a meter pole.
Yeah, that should, that should be.
That's actually about four hundred and fifty or so then.
Oh, no, 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 let's go up, way, yeah, well, yes, go way up.
Okay, so I get it.
Okay, so.
You're gonna build a house.
Mm-hmm.
Here's a field, you need power to that site to begin construction, okay, so that's a permanent, right?
Yes, yes. So they're temporary.
And that's in addition to whatever is covered by the new residence construction permit, because that's gonna take care of moving that to the building, right?
That's the way I understand it.
Not necessarily. Because you don't always take the one off of the temporary pole and put it on the house.
How come?
You just don't. Sometimes you do, but the temporary pole is pre-built, basically, you can build them on the site, but they're, they're built there, and then you don't, you don't. When you get through with it, you don't take them apart and put them on the house, you take them out.
Yeah, you take them out, take them out.
Get them out, take them away, yes.
Oh, there is. Oh, okay, because you have a di- a different meter base on the house.
Right. More than likely, you're gonna put a hundred amp meter base on a temporary pole, and your house is gonna have a two hundred.
That's why you see all these poles sticking out the side of Veritas's.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Now, what I'm not understanding, I, I understand temporary meter pole, um, and I understand the meter loop to a point. That's just gonna be one that goes on the house, I don't understand the additional meter loop. That's.
Is that burnt out building?
That Greg doesn't understand.
I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, if you're, if you're gonna put it on the outbuilding, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in the new loop.
Then, then we can.
I say we just mark out the additional meter loop.
Yeah.
Scratch it.
And do we really need to charge for opening?
What's electrical?
Do we really need to charge for opening?
That's what I was, what's it, what's an opening, electrical?
An opening is, yeah, an outlet or a switch or whatever.
Yeah, I see that.
Wait, so that, that probably has to do with another, well, that's the number of units they have to inspect, right, they have to inspect each of those outlets.
If you're, if you're adding to this, to the system, okay, so if you go in there and you add a circuit, yes. And that, that's where this kinda gets a little bit sticky closely, if you go in there and you just put one in, and you, and you put it off of. You got a bathroom here, and you put one on the other side of the wall, you, you do have a, an opening, but you haven't added anything to the system. Because there's no new circuit.
None of the circuit, okay.
So we're gonna mark that out? So do we keep it, or?
Um.
What does Bureau Veritas say?
That's where they come in, and they say anytime you put anything in, you will have it inspected and get a permit. To me, the let, the opening should be for, for, um, additional circuits.
Where's the additional, is that additional meter loop?
No.
Is that what that is?
It's not on there.
No, no, it's not on there, I'm saying it, it probably should read, uh, additional circuits, um, forty-two cents, I mean, that's. That's not even covered, but, um.
You said additional circuit?
Yeah, so, so if they're gonna come in and inspect new outlets, it's fourteen bucks plus forty-two cents for each additional.
Okay, so this is kinda crazy, so they're saying electro openings, so they're, they're assuming you're gonna be putting in. A new service. Another new service. I'm assuming, I'm assuming the electro openings is gonna be, if you're, if you put in a new service, then it's gonna be forty-two cents per opening.
That's something I can verify with Bureau Veritas, if that's.
Yeah, we, we need to know what they're.
Because again, if they're doing. I wonder if it's a remodel as opposed, or an addition of an existing house as opposed to, obviously, in a new one, that one would all be covered, should all be covered, right?
I would think so, it says if there's no new service, the first opening is fourteen dollars.
So does that need to stay?
I think we need to find out what the, well. If, if we're gonna use them, we need to understand what their verbiage is.
I agree.
Okay, here you an air conditioning permits. Minimum fee, fifty bucks. We gonna strike that one as well?
Okay, so, real quick, so if I'm building a new house.
Again, falls under your total.
Okay, so, so this is just if I need to, if I'm getting a new HVAC or adding a new HVAC?
So it shouldn't say new construction.
Right.
But that's. That also says commercial and multifamily, so.
And not just residential.
To me.
It doesn't say residential, so.
It does not say single family.
It doesn't say residential.
It's included in the residential up there.
But it would also be, it would also be.
But. But if it's.
If it's a replacement of an existing.
If you're just adding, or, or maybe you're adding one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that, to me, that wouldn't be new construction, that would be an addition.
It says additional down here, is that the, is it gonna be more than a thou- a hundred thousand BTUs?
No.
This is just for commercial, isn't it, this section?
I don't, I don't think so, you know, again, because part of the strategy here is that, you know, if you had somebody come in and install an HVAC system. As a city, we wanna make sure that it's done properly, so they don't burn your house down or neighbor's house, um. So that's, that's part of that. So we want it to be done right, we want it to be inspected.
Mm-hmm. And again.
New or?
Hold on, right, so if you're, if you're getting, again, that's where these fees just, a lot of this kinda just needs to be scratched, and the understanding that. If your, say your air conditioner at your home goes out.
No, no, perfect.
Okay, I know, I'm sorry.
Don't say that.
And you call somebody and they come in to replace it, it should fall under that, again, that hundred twenty-five dollar trade permit, because that's your permit and your inspection fee of that system.
From Veritas.
From Bureau Veritas, regardless of how big, there's no BTUs, there's no tonnage, there's no stipulation of that store from them. It's just.
It's based on how many, how many units they have to come in and inspect, basically.
I don't even know if it's based on that, I think it's just.
Well, surely if I put in three HVAC units, that's a different price than if I just put one.
Could be, I don't know, that's something we need to clarify.
It should, because they all three have to be inspected.
Right.
Well, I wanna make sure guys.
But are they charging per inspection, or is it considered a total unit?
But they would, they would charge a one inspection fee though, if they're already there.
Right, yeah, I don't, I don't believe they charge.
They wouldn't charge per.
You're, you're already being charged per square foot.
Right.
An addition. So.
No, no.
That's in a new bill, I'm talking about a.
No, no, we're talking, we're talking like, okay, your house right now is, it is what it is, okay, here's your house. Your AC working great. Tomorrow, it's not, you call out an HVAC guy. They should only pull that permit of the one twenty-five, which is your permit and inspection fee, so none of this other, and it, Bureau Veritas does not base it off of, you gotta, you gotta. You know, a zero to fifteen, or a hundred and fifty thousand BTU unit.
Where are you getting the one twenty-five?
That's their trade permit fees, that's the inspection fee plus the permit fee. And all those permit fees were paid, the one twenty-five is the seventy-six plus the minimum of fifty, it's actually forty-nine and some change.
But that's not what they charge.
They only charge us.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six ninety-two, the permit fee is that fifty dollars, regardless of the size of the unit. And their, their inspection fee does not change based on the size of the unit.
So how much did you say it was total?
One twenty-five. And the city does keep those permit fees, because we're the ones who issue the permits.
That's, that's where we're making a little bit.
Yes, that is where.
Is the difference between that minimum.
So.
Okay, so always here in there.
So the city's making the minimum fee.
Is the difference between the minimum and the center?
Ain't no.
And whatever the actual is.
Yeah, the difference between what Bureau costs, whatever their total is.
So.
Right.
So we might rethink scratching those minimum fees and.
So essentially, the city's making forty-eight oh eight off that one twenty-five, out of that.
And we're saying making it, that's.
I mean, that, here, right, that's your price for your eight, you, you know, all that.
Well, yeah, calling in additional support if it.
Right.
Takes longer.
Okay, so what do y'all wanna do with this little section? Are we gonna mark out that minimum fee that we have in the other two? Or is this, we consider this for difference, since it's heating and air conditioning?
It's, it shouldn't be any different.
I'm sorry, sorry, it should not be any different. No. And same thing, I mean, pretty much all of these are going to, they fall under that.
Okay, still no, okay, so new construction, commercial and multifamily. So we're not taught, this is not for new construction, correct?
No, this is just for.
So this is commercial and residential, basically.
No.
No?
No.
I said.
So what is it for?
Unless you're calling the residential the new construction, because it's got new construction badge.
No, no, I'm just saying.
You need to take out new construction completely.
Yeah, new construction out completely, and then it should, to me, it should say commercial or, or residential and commercial, because we're just talking about. Basically, this right here is not for new construction, it's just the, an existing building that you are.
Having to.
Replacing or adding a new unit to.
And see, I guess we need to find out on multifamily, obviously.
You would think that it would be with the commercial, because it's, I mean, if it's apartments or something, then it's.
That's gonna fall in the commercial, right?
So it's just a trade permit of one twenty-five, no matter, I believe it's no matter what.
I'd like to understand how Bureau Veritas really applies this, because I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me that there's a square footage component in this.
Right, and see, like I said, this is something that was in, that they gave us, and it, it's your trade, it says trade permits, building mechanical or electrical, electrical, one twenty-five. And again, that, that includes your inspection and your permitting fee, plumbing, fuel, gas, and or similar, one twenty-five. Fence permit, they have seventy-five, but like I said, we've decided we're not charging that much, swimming pool based on valuation, solar panels, two hundred dollars. Certificate, certificate of occupancy only, a hundred dollars, and this says alteration slash addition for residential construction. And then under commercial, it says based off valuation, minimum of ten thousand dollars, it's a hundred and eighty dollars, and I don't really know what that means, because there's nothing there other than that.
So that just adds to our occupancy permit fee, we have fifteen, she just wrote off a hundred.
Well, but, that's what, that's what they were, this is their suggested charge, we don't have to charge, okay.
Yeah, we were gonna, we were with them and find out what's going on.
We were gonna get with them and see what, you know, like I said, the only one we've issued is for Dollar General, it was included in their whole site plan review.
So, so I, I do kinda understand about the, the square footage, um.
But we don't have, you can strike all those, and really, it's just a hundred and twenty-five dollar trade permit.
For this heating and air conditioning?
Regardless, it, it appears regardless of residential or commercial, but I will verify with them for commercial and multifamily.
I don't understand the inspection process for commercial, I mean, just.
I, I don't either.
If, if you wind up with a fifty thousand square foot warehouse somewhere in town, that's got an HVAC, what?
Yeah, they've got ten units as opposed to this building only has two.
So I can see where for a commercial and multifamily, that could be an issue, but not for residential, that, that doesn't.
Right.
So they just need to be commercial, okay, so.
Well, we, I need to, we need to verify with them.
Or maybe it should be commercial and multifamily, and charge a square footage on it.
And see what, how they, see how they bill it out, yeah, it needs to, we need to find out how they bill out these things.
And basically just strike the new construction.
Right.
And then, uh, so do we need to add a line residential?
Residential, one twenty-five.
Hundred twenty-five trade permit?
Yeah, and then verify.
Or do we already have that somewhere?
It shouldn't, because it's only P and N.
Last registration.
Okay, so in that case, hundred twenty-five dollar trade permit for residence, so whether I'm replacing one or two units, does it matter?
Don't have to find out.
Okay.
Yeah, same thing, is it, is it one twenty-five, or, you know, because. We're issuing the permit, and then the seventy-six ninety-two is for their, um, inspection.
But that's only a one time.
Right.
So i- if they do ten units, it's still seventy-six.
Maybe, that's what, that's what we need to verify.
I don't know how it could be any different, if they're gonna send an inspector out one time, it's a one time fee.
But if he's inspecting multiple units, what, are they charging per unit, or they?
But he's only coming to one place to inspect everything, so.
But isn't that your question, Russell?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And so, the sp- specific example I'm thinking of is when we bought that house, we replaced three HVAC, HVAC systems with three HVAC systems, okay? We had, we had to pay for an inspection for the bank, for the home improvement end, right, so they came out once, it wasn't right, so we had to pay another inspection fee to get them to come out after it had been erected, right? So I'm, I'm curious about how this works out in this situation.
Right.
For somebody who's got a single HVAC they're gonna replace or two, right, is that a one permit?
Right.
And, and then an additional for however many BTUs or tonnages.
Right.
So if it's two systems total of seven tons, is that covered with one residential trade call plus seven times four twenty? So thirty bucks?
Yeah, that's a.
I don't know.
Yeah, but it, it doesn't break it down in this, that detail.
So you got that written down that you can have?
And, and it might be helpful, even when we get done with this, to go through and just do some scenarios as an example. If you build a two thousand square foot house, this is what it'll, this is what it'll cost you in permit fees. If you replace an HVAC system, this is what it'll cost.
So you pull one of what they're asking for instead of.
Okay, so the gas, uh, y'all wanna move on to the gas permit?
Gas permit, same thing.
Yeah, one, one quick thing. Again, I think it, I don't, I, I wouldn't say why it would matter if you did one or ten.
Well, but that's something we need to verify with them.
I understand, but, but here's the thing. If you go in and you rewire a house, okay? They're only gonna come out one time, you're gonna have one inspection fee. Now, if you go in there and rewire a kitchen, they're gonna come out one time, you know? So if they, you do the whole house, they're gonna, they're gonna have to look at the whole house. You know, but it's, surely that, it's gonna take them longer, but they're not gonna charge you anymore because it's, you know, one inspection fee.
Okay, so let's talk about something that probably is, is a, something that a lot of folks are gonna have to deal with is panel replacements, right? So how is that, how would that be handled under?
Like what's a flaming?
So that the entire electrical panel has to come out. Wiring's fine, nothing, nothing in the house has to be replaced, but that electrical panel and all the circuits have to be updated.
Right.
Not the breakers?
Uh-huh, breaker panel.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and again, that's, that's the thing. It, it's really not listed here.
That's what I'm saying, we just need to, I just need to verify with them.
Yeah, it should. Because there, or this verbiage here is really.
Right.
Really vague. I mean, if you go in and upgrade the service, maybe that's what they're, I don't know, I don't, I don't, that's why I wrote down verbiage on there. Because I don't understand exactly what they're, what they're getting at.
Okay, the gas permit?
All right, gas permit, it's minimum fee.
Again, same thing, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollar trade permit.
For what?
For inspection and permit fees for gas, any gas, line replacements or.
So would that not fall under plumbing?
Does a plumber come in?
Plumber has to be doing it.
I think they've got, I mean.
So are you gonna have to pay a plumber, a plumbing permit and a gas permit? Because if a plumber comes out and does gas?
If he's only doing the gas line, no. If he's doing a gas and a, and plumbing for actual water lines, then yes, he has to pay two separate.
Wow. If he's doing it same time?
Let's take that to see.
Two separate, see that, because you're gonna, you're gonna have to.
If it's the base of the floor.
But they're going to.
I mean, it's one guy.
Yeah.
Right.
One, one makes the ditch wet, the other one skirts debris all over town.
Yeah, but he, they're gonna inspect it all at one time.
Again, that's, I guess, something we need to verify with them.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now we're putting the hundred and twenty-five. On each, right?
Because if you, if you.
Taking out the minimum fee.
I think if you don't differentiate and they don't come out to do any other plumbing work and all they're doing is a gas line, they may try to skirt that. Does that, you see what I'm saying? If they don't come out and actually, I understand that a plumber does a gas line, I get that. But if they come out and, well, you don't have it specifically down here for gas.
Okay, so.
And they may try to say, well.
Uh, down here on the plumbing then, uh.
You don't have it written out.
I see.
On the plumbing, we go, um, we can mark out then, the, the permit is included in the new construction.
New construction, mhm.
So scratch new construction.
Yep.
And you're scratching the minimum fee? Uh, what about the add-on and repairs?
Add-on and repairs for.
For each fixture?
Yep.
For sewer line, for fire line.
And then it looks in the back.
Okay.
So. Okay, so again, verbiage on that.
I just don't think they charge fourteen dollars for a water heater.
Well, okay.
Again, I think it's actually gonna fall under the one twenty-five now. For the permit and the inspection fee, because you have.
So, but if somebody, if somebody doesn't install it right, and there's a leak, and we wind up writing, and we wind up writing off two hundred dollars worth of water because it wasn't installed right.
I'm just saying.
And actually, I believe any and all of these would more than likely just fall under your plumbing permit of one twenty-five because it's gonna have to have the permit and the inspection fee.
If you have that water leak on Saturday, when you're not open, you're not gonna get a hundred way back.
If they want their stuff inspected, I would do.
I'm just saying, if it's heavy fix though, they're gonna be able to.
You'll let it run.
Yeah.
So.
But if they want any inspection on their fixture.
So we've got, we've got a hundred and twenty-five dollar fee, trade fee, and they're gonna come out and put in a new, new faucet, which is three dollars and fifty cents.
On top of the hundred and twenty-five dollar trade fee?
Yeah.
I think this is ridiculous.
Yeah. And that's why I, I'm.
We all can get rid of that.
I'm really concerned about the trade fees, but
So.
it has to cover the inspection.
Right, so.
I mean, I understand that.
Here's the wash though, right? You decide to do it without a permit. You have a leak. You come to us because you used ten thousand gallons of water last month instead of two thousand. Did you get a permit? If you didn't get a permit, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna write off that water loss or are we gonna say?
No, and we can still make them.
But how many people are gonna have their faucet changed out just because they need their faucet changed out? Never has anything to do with the water leak or anything else.
Then strike it off, like you don't have to, you don't have to have the per-feet fixture on here. If you wanna allow somebody to change their faucet without, then they.
It's like changing a light switch.
Right, it's like changing a light switch.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's like changing a hot switch from a, from one hot dish to a rocker switch.
Again, some of this is the verbiage that's, that's on here. You know?
Okay, so are we marking that fixture out or?
Yes.
I agree, and, and it's a little on the ridiculous side, right? Because I shut the water valve off, I replace the faucet, if the faucet's leaking, I'm gonna shut the water off.
Right.
Right, that's not gonna happen, but if somebody decides they're gonna run a new water line under their house, and they don't permit it, then we gotta figure out how we're gonna handle or treat that.
Yes. And, and I can tell you how the water heater kind of fell in is because it's gas-water heaters. But they couldn't say, the state says they can't say gas-water heaters.
Right.
So they have to include all water heaters. And the state says you'll have a plumber come out and change the water heater. And, and it's because the, there was a lot of gas-water heaters that did not get properly installed and houses burned down. Flame incident.
Carbon dioxide or.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Gas leaks.
Didn't that happen here just the other day? A girl tried a, left a water heater and the house exploded.
Really? In Illinois?
No, no, not here, not here.
Yeah, I, it happens.
It was here in Texas, but not in back here.
It, it happens for sure, there's no doubt about it.
Okay, so what about the other fees?
The sewer line, fire line, water line, I would actually, I mean, those should be.
Most of the fire line consists of, just so we all see.
Well, it'll be like, does Dollar General have fire lines in their, in their building? I don't think they do.
Is that the scraper?
No, they don't, they, because they requested a variance because they had started their, they had started all of their plans.
That's what they do everywhere.
Well, they started their plans before we had any of this, and before we had Bureau Veritas, before we'd adopted the building code. So it wasn't there and they were, if we don't, if we have to go back and do it, then they may scrap the whole project while the law.
Yeah, it's a, it's a major cost.
Yeah, the council agreed to give them a variance to not have a fire line.
Okay, so.
But again, that would be more than likely under new construction, that's gonna be, that's gonna fall under your total fees.
It's not gonna matter, yeah, so. I don't quite understand why the fire line's in there.
Okay, so are we gonna mark that out?
I would mark all of them out, to be honest with you. Because again, most of it should fall under your trade permit.
Okay.
Okay, so where's our trade permit at?
That's the one twenty-five.
Where, where is that?
But it's not listed, is what you're saying.
Well, you can just put it, I mean.
We're gonna add it on to it.
Right, you're just putting trade permits, one twenty-five for gas and.
So we're gonna basically strike.
Plumbing.
Plumbing.
So plumbing is.
Wrong.
Except for the inspection and trade fee.
Yeah, so we can just scratch this and put in a trade fee.
Inspection and trade fee.
Well, the, no, the trade fee includes.
Trade, trade fee's gonna include the inspection.
Well, but if it's listed out there, then everybody, I mean, there's no, no.
Right, it'll, it'll say.
You know what I'm saying? I know we know right now, but to everybody.
I, I, I agree.
Well, is there any indication that they have any per-square-foot calculations built into there?
No.
For plumbing, okay.
Okay, um.
Definitely don't.
Well, I will kind of check. Of initial inspections, that four hundred dollars.
Again.
That's in, that's included in that new residential.
So I would, I would love to see just a sample of that, like, just build your perfect dream home and ask for the Bureau Veritas costs.
So we're gonna put a sample just like that?
Right.
Okay.
You know, so nine thousand square foot house. You know, irrigation system, all that good stuff.
Should be, um, hold on.
Well.
Okay, how many square feet we talking?
Uh, reasonable, twenty-five hundred.
Okay. Twenty-five hundred, okay, so seven eighty-five, let's hold on. So the first fifteen, we said twenty-five hundred, minus fifteen hundred is a double.
Make it, make it easy. Whatever that base rate is, five, eighteen hundred square feet.
Well, seven eighty-five. Okay, so if you're building a twenty-five hundred square foot house, okay? Your fees for your permits and inspections, all in total, should be eleven thirty-five.
Okay, so, but there's a.
Verify that with Bureau Veritas.
Yeah, with whatever their system is.
That's the calculation.
I agree.
Nobody likes surprises.
Yeah.
You know, they tell you it's gonna be eleven hundred.
So long as you, so long as you know you really hear it, then you say, well, you don't.
Do it.
Better safe than sorry.
Yeah.
Safe and sorry for what? I'm sorry, what?
The, the calculation.
The calculation fee.
So I see, I see what you're doing, you've got the rates.
Yeah, you're doing.
And I wanna make sure that their system calculates it the same way.
Yeah.
Okay, the red tag, what, what we all signed?
She said that they don't do that.
They don't do, we don't.
Really, they'll.
They, they, they give you, okay, so after the first inspection, if you fail the first inspection, they will come, and you, they give you the chance to rectify it. They come back out with no additional charge. Now, if you have to have a third inspection, yes, they will, they will charge you.
What does that fall under? We don't have.
All of them. Additional inspections.
Electric ones, not electric, all inspections, uh, doesn't matter.
Okay, so we need to add that to the.
Be foundation, water, electrical, gas and sewer, and, uh.
They don't do after hours, so scratch that.
So the initial inspections is nothing, right?
Uh, yeah, we can honestly just get rid of that completely, like, strike the whole.
On.
Strike the entire section of the initial inspections.
Initial inspections.
Because that's included in your different trade permits and your, for your building.
Where's the initial? It's above there.
Oh, yes, okay, I already moved that out.
Yeah. Okay, so then.
Because I put samples on there.
I just don't know how much, like, if you have to have a third inspection, I'm not sure how much they charge.
Well, let's just leave it at eighty at the point, at this point.
Because it should cover, I'm assuming they probably don't charge more than seventy-six ninety-two.
Yeah, because they're calling an inspection back out, so, okay.
Right.
Okay, so.
I would.
So we're gonna leave that one in.
I would say, and, but we need to reword it as.
Addition, well, something dynamic, additional inspections may incur additional charges.
Because it's after. Uh-huh.
As charged by.
After the second inspection.
Yeah.
I'd like to leave it flexible enough so that if they change it, we don't have to go back and.
Right.
Reevaluate it.
Right. Additional inspections.
Will we even leave that at eighty?
Mhm, I'll verify with them what they charge, but as of right now, we're gonna leave it at eighty. May, additional inspections may incur.
Okay, what is this special called meetings?
That's if somebody needs a like, I mean, you say playing a zoning board.
I guess, I guess if they turn in a site plan and it doesn't get approved or whatever, and.
So they're gonna pay the city a hundred and forty bucks?
No, fourteen hundred dollars.
Well, they're gonna be paying fourteen hundred.
Well, and actually, I like that because if we have to bring our attorney down there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's covering, these are above normal extraordinary circumstances.
That'll cover his fees. Kind of like the one that on Park Street, I mean, if he doesn't use weight then.
Yes. He may, yeah. Mhm, yeah.
And we could use that under planning, um.
Mhm.
This.
Yes.
Okay, what about the other three?
Appeal to construction code board, we don't even have a construction code board of adjustments and appeals, not yet, so.
Okay, so we mark it for y'all?
And I think some of these were added just.
We scratching?
We have probably one we don't have to move as well.
Eventually we get, but we don't.
We can add them back.
Right.
Okay, zoning requests.
What about the standard unsafe conference plan board, just scratch all those?
We.
Sure.
Zoning requests.
Specific use permit, zone change. So a zone change is, I mean, you know.
Mhm, you wanna change from residential to commercial.
Which is what we're going through with Park Street, so.
But his grandfather, he said he can't be charged, right?
No, he was charged.
Oh, he was.
He was already charged, oh, yeah.
How much was he charged, that portion of money?
Mm, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so we're leaving that for sure?
Mhm, because, um, when they submit the packet for the request change, they have to pay for it at that time.
So, and who does it?
What, what if?
Park Street, the company.
What if it doesn't go through?
They went commercial?
If it doesn't, not yet.
Oh, okay.
If it doesn't go through, they, it doesn't matter, they don't get that money back.
That's not what it says.
Where?
Where?
I mean, it just says it's got a fee of, uh, zone change.
For zoning requests.
Request, zone request fees.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Zoning request fees up top, so that's.
Misread it.
Okay, specific use permit?
Mhm. Oh. Um. What is the definition?
They wanna make their commercial.
No, cause that's a change.
That's your zone change.
Yeah. Uh, if, if your property is being used, we'll say, uh, residential now, and you want it, uh-
Commercial, no.
No, uh, you wanna run cattle on it, you know, um, and, and maybe that's not a good one. But something along those lines, whatever it's being used for now, and you wanna use it for something different, then it's a special use permit.
But we don't, we're rezoning.
Not rezoning.
Right, okay.
I think, isn't it like temporary?
Okay, so, I think, okay, so here's, here's the look at it. An example of a special use permit is where the zoning authorities allow a business to operate in an area that is not normally marked for business activity, such as a residential area. Another example is where a church is allowed to operate in an area otherwise marked for business.
Right. Using it for what it, use it for something that it's not being used for at this point.
Without a zoning page.
But they don't want to completely change the zoning because they, in the event they sell, in the event they wanna sell a building, then it's still zoned as whatever, but it's-
I, I think commonly you hear it referred to as a non-conforming, so something has a non-conforming use, and so to maintain the use of that property, and, and you could use that for a grandfather thing too. If there's been some sort of a master plan that says, here's what's gonna happen, okay, we're gonna leave this like that, but it's gonna cause us to have to go back and make revisions, and there's a fee associated with that. That's really what it's about, is the, covering the, the cost.
Okay, revising it, yes.
Okay, so, uh, plats, preliminary, and final plats?
I have no idea what those costs are.
Yeah, I would, I'll need to-
But do we, as a city, do, or is that more than?
Bureau Veritas would have to look at those, cause we don't, y'all-
Well, I think, I think like these streets and stuff, I think that's gonna be the replat and this stuff like that. So that's what our attorney is doing now, correct?
For St. Louis Street, um, as far as I know, you know, he's writing up the verbiage for the abandonment for the ordinance.
But it has to be replatted.
Okay, explain to me, a plant is-
A plant is involving, uh, sub-dividing property.
Yeah, it's a division of property, like a-
So, why would we need to redo it if we're doing?
Cause it's going away, as, as it is.
We don't have a same plant as a stand. Really, this is more of-
That's why I figured it was accounting, it's going more of that.
Your, your property, how many, how many acres do you have, Disha?
Couple.
Okay, five. And you want to divide it out into two lots of two and a half acres each. You're, that's a replat.
But would the city do that, or would the county do that?
You're in the city limit, so the city would do that. Well, you would be responsible for having an engineer do it.
What if part was in the city and part was in the county, would you?
I don't know.
But you gotta make it complicated.
Why do you gotta make it, why do you gotta make it difficult, Disha?
Quick, quick.
Okay, so-
Okay, so for instance, the, the, the lot I live on is a half acre lot, and the house is on one side, there's a driveway in the middle, and they were talking about taking the other side and putting another house on it. He would have to have that planted that way. So in order for, so what he, that he would have someone draw up this plant, that would then have to be submitted to Bureau Veritas. And that's where this fee comes from. Now, if the three hundred fifty, I don't know if that covers, more than likely it probably does because they don't, probably didn't charge that much.
So we're gonna leave all these, these fees and just verify?
We can verify that.
Verify that, or at least what Bureau Veritas is checking.
Yeah.
Okay, contractor registration.
Which, I know you keep saying they're illegal, but everybody's charging them.
Well, the, these are illegal. Yes, you can't, you can't, yeah, you cannot charge, you can't charge a contractor.
Okay, so we're gonna-
To register with the city to verify that they are-
You cannot charge the contractor to register, you can charge a permit, but you cannot charge a contractor. Now, you can have them-
You can't charge, if you have one contractor who's in charge of an entire field, you can charge that. You cannot cha- then charge each individual sub under him.
You cannot charge, here, here's where it kinda comes in. All the trades are state licensed, because, so that basically says it's okay for them to work here. What you're saying is, they can't work here unless you chart, unless you pay fifty dollars. You can't make them do that.
Cause they gotta register.
Now, one thing is, you can ha- ask them, you can have them register and verify their insurance.
And we can require bonding if we want to.
I don't think you can require bonding either.
I actually think our ordinance says the bond is, my bond in there.
I, I understand what it says, but some things change, and I don't think you can require a bond, but you can require them to verify their insurance.
I guess I'm not understanding how we're sitting here saying it's illegal when you have cities like, I mean, I'm sorry, City of Dallas has to have, they have multiple attorneys on staff.
So they're registering people, I don't know if they're charging people to register.
They charge a hundred and twenty dollars, cause I'm looking at the application right now.
Okay.
And registration or renewal, a hundred and twenty dollars, it's the same contract to registration fee, or, uh, form, it's pretty much the same contract to registration form we use.
Why would we wanna charge them to register?
Because you are using city employees to verify that they are actually licensed and that they are actually insured. That takes time. They can, they can produce, they can send you something that looks like a registration card and insurance all day long, doesn't make it so.
Yeah, I think that's actually a great point.
Yeah, and she, we're having to use her to verify their information.
Well, again, we need to look at the state law and make sure, because what I read, you cannot charge contractors.
Okay. So, okay, so if the state law says we can, do we want to charge them the fifty bucks?
If there's work involved, like background checking, or verifying insurance, or whatever the requirements are.
Okay, so we're saying, yes, we do, only the registration fee at fifty, if the state law says we can do it, correct?
And, and the attorney should be able to answer that, depending on what to do.
Yeah, I think he said that last time that-
But we'll get it in writing, and that way we'll have it.
See, that's, that's why none of these, none of the cities around is charged a registration fee, period.
So we don't have to?
You don't, you know, you don't have to, but I-
Well, if we're charging them, if we're charging them for an ins- a, a trade fee, and the other, I can say not charging them.
Well, I'll, I'll, I can dig up the, or, I've, I've got it printed out. I'll pull out the printout of, from the state, and then we'll go, kinda go from there. But I, I do know that none of the others, no, I don't come be Cooper and Honey Grove, none of them charge a registration fee. Silver Springs, they don't charge a registration fee. They do ask you to come in and register, and-
But they don't charge a fee.
Even when you're doing work in the city, they ask you to come in and tell them, so that they'll know you're doing work in the city.
I mean, I can see, it's hard enough to get people out here, so I wouldn't wanna do anything that would create a problem for getting somebody who was decent to come out, but at the same time, I wanna make sure they got insurance.
Yes, that's, that's, you, you, you don't, you don't wanna insure people here, that's right.
Okay, so what do we wanna do under this item?
Uh, verify.
Just, we wanna verify?
Yeah.
Okay, with that being said, Dana, um, I know that's a lot for you to have to do, but the next C, mean, can you-
Can you have that information?
I will try, but you know, y'all got meetings every week for like the next one, twelve weeks now.
Well, sure we do. We'll keep seeing everybody.
Uh, I would like to, uh, thank you everybody for their participation, and I thank you really well. And, um, I will adjourn this at nine thirty.
Thank you. Wait, what?
Nine, yes.